If the call is great, it would be in order.
Mayor Querom.
Here.
Councilmember Swanson.
Here.
Mavri.
Here.
Fabia.
Here.
Newman.
Here. Please stand and join us in the pleasure.
(inaudible)
You got to start it. I'm going to ask our chief of police to stand up. He's got a couple of items to attend to.
All right, first, we have a new officer starting today, Mr. Corey Grande. Corey was born and raised in Chillicothe. He graduated from Illinois Valley Central High School in 2010. He attended Western Illinois University, graduating with a Bachelor of Science degree in Law Enforcement Administration in 2014. Corey worked for the Peoria County Sheriff's Department as a Corrections Officer from 2014 till 2016. In 2016, he became a Community Service Officer for the City of Naperville, where he worked up until this past Friday. He's joined here tonight by his mother Kathleen, his father Henry, and his sister Charlene, and his aunt Diane B. Ward.
Corey, you want to raise your right hand? Repeat after me. Aye, Corey Grande.
Aye, Corey Grande.
I guess it's got that right. Having been appointed to the office of Police Officer.
Having been appointed to the office of Police Officer.
In the city of Princeton.
In the city of Princeton.
In the county of Bureau.
In the county of Bureau.
In the state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Police Officer to the best of my ability.
Of the office of Police Officer to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Now, we're going to recognize Rob Jensen as Dare Officer of the Year.
All right, so on Friday, Rob and his family and Ben Atkinson and myself attended the awards ceremony down in Peoria, where Rob was presented with the Illinois Dare Officer of the Year Award from the state of Illinois. So, the letter that was sent to us, I'll summarize here real quick. On behalf of the Illinois Dare Officers Association Awards Committee, it is my privilege to inform you that you've been selected as a recipient of the 2018 Dare Officer of the Year Award. With sincere appreciation for the work you do in guiding the youth and promoting safe and sound decision-making, please accept this award as our way of thanking you for your outstanding service. Your service to your community and specifically to the children whose safety and well-being you are entrusted with is noble and honorable. And we are delighted to be able to bring the much deserved recognition to you. May your good work continue for many years to come. Rob's been doing this Dare thing for 20 years now. And I've been fortunate to be able to spend some time with Rob as I'm kind of learning my way around here. And yet to find someone in this town that doesn't know you. To me, it's very impressive, the impact you pay on the community and the kids in this town. So, this is very, very well-observed. And I'm really proud of you for doing this.
It's an honor long overdue. It really is.
I think the press wants to get a picture of you maybe holding the mic for Rob. Maybe come around and tell him there's better work.
And we can excuse anybody who would like to leave at this time and sit down and be in exit operation. And at this time, if you have any further comments. Public comment. Just need your name.
Hi, Geraldine Woodleaf. Two weeks ago at the last council meeting, we heard about the two ordinances and the council members' views. Now, I will tell a story, a parable, a fable, giving a citizen's view. Let's say you are a parent, and one of your kids asks you for money to buy a house. You go ahead, you give them the money. About a month later, they come to you and say, hey, Mom, hey, Dad, I need some money to fix up my house. Okay, what should you say? Does this sound familiar? It should. It should sound familiar from what you said at the last meeting. Where does the high school get its money? Do they have bake sales? No. They depend on taxes. I talked to other people in town about this, and they too were a little upset. The taxes to the high school are come out of my pocket. Where else would they get the money to buy a building, to repair a building? And the other question was, what about the real estate taxes that we wouldn't get? Thank you.
Thank you, Geraldine. Any other comments, public comments? Okay, we'll go to the approval amendments to Councilmember Newman. I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on June 4th, 2018.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any corrections? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavri.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. Now, we'll go to the approval of invoices to City Clerk Nelson.
In the Department of Accounts and Finances during this period, we have invoices totaling $175,846.63. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, we have invoices totaling $118,007.51. In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling $351,273.38. And in the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling $749,020.58. Mayor, all council members present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices and now are submitted for disposition.
I make a motion that we approve the invoices as presented.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavri.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. Now, we'll go to regular business and back to City Clerk Nelson.
Next on the agenda is the second and final reading of Ordinance Number O-18-014. This is an ordinance of the city of Princeton providing for borrowing of not to exceed $2.95 million from Central Bank Illinois for the purpose of advanced refunding of its 2013 Series C General Obligation Refunding Bonds, alternate revenue source, and partial reimbursement of US EDA Grant Number 067905501. Mayor, this has been reviewed by all council members and is submitted for disposition.
I make a motion that we approve Ordinance O-18-014, which provides for borrowing not to exceed $2.9 million from Central Bank.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavri.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the second and final reading of Ordinance Number O-18-015. This is an ordinance of the city of Princeton providing for borrowing of not to exceed $450,000 from Central Bank Illinois for the purpose of funding street improvements and the purchase of equipment. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve Ordinance O-18-015, which provides for borrowing of not to exceed $450,000 from Central Bank.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavri.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the first reading of Ordinance O-18-016. This is an ordinance authorizing dedication and acceptance of dedication of property for roadway purposes. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we advance Ordinance O-18-016 to the second reading.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. And for Rachel.
I'll just take a quick comment that both of these roadway dedication ordinances are part of Efferson Road Bridge Project that's being shared with the county. So, the city's portion of that project goes with preliminary engineering, securing these roadways so now they can move forward with their phase on the construction.
Any further comment? Motion has been seconded. Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavri.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is Ordinance O-18-017. This is the first reading of the ordinance, which is authorizing dedication and acceptance of dedication of property for roadway purposes. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we advance Ordinance O-18-017 to the second reading.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavri.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. Thank you, Pete. That's ended regular business. We'll see the manager report. Rachel doesn't have her report signed. So, now, I've got a couple of items on mine. I've got a couple of reappointments and entertain a couple of reappointments and an appointment to the city treasurer. I make a motion that we reappoint to the Police and Fire Commission, Mike English, for a three-year term expiring on August 1st, 2021.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavri.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. I make a motion that we reappoint to the Bike Pedestrian Commission, Rick Menzel, for a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavri.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
I make a motion that we appoint. I'm sorry, was I picture? I make a motion that we appoint to city treasurer effective July 1st, 2018, Bob Davidson.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavri.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. Thank you, Jerry. And we'll go to any whole business.
Mr. Querom, if I could, please. The past two weeks, we've had a lot of discussion about the property, committing the possible old recycling building. I'm not here to rehash that. But I was thinking about how the city of Princeton can convey property in a lot of different ways. They can market property in a lot of different ways, just like an individual property owner could. So, we could have listed that property as a realtor. We could have put it for public auction. We could have put it out for bids. And we did. The one idea was to request for proposals. My point is that maybe we should rethink this and go back with the idea of putting this out for public auction, where we would be able to advertise it, use a local auctioneer. We know what the minimum bid's going to be. And we would be announcing in the advertisement, as well as the date of the auction, that we would have a delayed closing for, let's say, 90 days so we can make sure we have a place to put our stuff that's in the building currently. It gives the two people that had bid on the property or requested the proposals that were given a chance to bid on the property, as well as maybe any other third party. So, we could get this back as a project back onboard and hopefully get one of the suitors to be the successful bidder, if not a third party. And with that said, again, we could structure it that there be a minimum bid, which we know what that would be. That would be the 20% less of the appraised value. We would request like 90 days for closing to give us time to be able to repair or refurbish one of our existing buildings, to put the city's items in there. We could also put a minimum standard that they would have to renovate the exterior of the building within 24 months. So, there could be a couple of simple stipulations in there. Allow the public to bid on it, as well as hopefully the two that had been bidding on it. And if the successful bidder is high school, great. If the successful bidder is a private enterprise, great. And if it's a third person that comes in. So, we revisit it with an auction. We have a minimum bid. And I just think that's a way that we could possibly convey this and get this thing moving again. Because the feedback I got, again, we're not going to hash toward this, was it seemed like half the community was in favor of one entity getting it and the other entity. So, why not offer it for public auction? Any thoughts on that, Mayor?
You know, we're talking about Main Street. You know, Main Street is business, it's industry. You know, my feeling on that building at this point is that if we were to sell it, I think it should go to a commercial entity. I don't know, you know. So, I would be fine, sorry, if we were to do that and limit it to commercial, people that have a commercial interest in that building. It's on Main Street. I think that's what belongs there, business.
Now, an auction at the, I believe, is like around 25%?
No, and I would say typical. I'm sure it could be negotiated, of course. It could be 2% or 3%. It could be a very reasonable fee. And I believe local auctioneers understanding the city's could be auctioning off would be very willing to work with us.
So, would that be above the minimum? Or would we be able to deduct the auctioneer cost from the minimum bid? What from the minimum bid?
If I could address that, John, of course, he's dealt with the state in auctions. But sometimes what they do is, again, knowing the terms upfront, they'll say that the buyer is going to be paying the buyer's premium or the auction fee of, say, the 3%. They know that going in, and so they would be the ones paying. So, it's all negotiable. It's all set in terms upfront as to what the rules are.
So, we would be getting charged, auctioneer fee?
It could be structured that way.
And if we were, would we have to bump up that minimum bid a little bit? Or would we be able to drop that?
I don't think so. I think it's always anticipated you're going to have some expenses to save.
So, we just need the minimum and then deduct from the bill?
Expenses, that's what I would think.
Ray, or if I could ask any of the council members, any thoughts on this?
Could we agree, if we were to even consider such a thing, that we would have some stipulations as to who cannot purchase this building? I mean, we don't want a guy who's selling junk cars to buy the building.
Well, first off, I'd hopefully agree that the high school, if they're using it for a possible storage for a transportation, for their buses, would be an acceptable bidder. I hope that they were not going to restrict them from bidding on it. But I think John could have better addressed that, how we would restrict some of this, again, knowing the terms upfront. As long as a buyer knows the terms upfront, just like you could sell an old gas station every weekend if you wanted to, as long as the buyer upfront knows terms.
Well, you know the terms upfront, but what if somebody with good intention buys it, is going to have a new car dealership there? And six months later, a year later, two years later, they're selling junk old cars? I mean, it's hard to control what other people do with property they buy. And if we want to keep our hands on it to try to control what people are doing with it, I think it makes it a lot less marketable. I mean, I think most people wouldn't want to buy a piece of property and have somebody else tell them what to do with it.
So, obviously, we'd want to keep the very minimum. What restrictions would be? For example, delaying the closing 90 days would not be a problem.
I would think not at all.
And maybe requesting that in 24 months, they at least do a minimal improvements to the exterior of the building? Because we aren't necessarily concerned about the interior. We're just concerned about the exterior.
We could do that, I think. But then the question is, what do you? Again, do you chase them? If I'm going to lose the property in 24 months, I may be not going to bid much on it. Are you going to have a reverter that Z is going to come back to the city? And are we going to have to pay them back what we received for it? If not, I think you're not very likely to have bidders, quite frankly. You know, it would be pretty tough asking somebody to pay X number of dollars for a building with the idea they might lose it if it's not satisfactory to the city's standards rehab within a certain period of time. Again, since, I'm not saying you can't do it, but I just, I think it makes it less marketable.
Okay, let me ask this question. If we, again, based on the terms, if we said we would need 90 days for closing and the council gets the final approval of the bid, so they have the auction date, and then the council gets final approval of bid? Bitter?
I'd have to take a look at that, give that a little more thought. Are you going to, when you say final approval, if you don't like the high bid, then you go back to the second bid? You know, it's kind of like you're saying, I want the highest bid, but it may or may not be satisfactory?
Sure. I realize every time we put in a restriction or we complicate things, you know, Jerry, before you came on the council, one of the successful things I felt we had as a council from previous councils was the revolving loan fund. Now, some council members were not excited about that, but that was an opportunity for the city to engage in some incentives where they would loan money to a small business that created or retained jobs. And we loaned that money out at 3% interest. Now, that was a risk factor. Because when I first got on the council, I asked the city manager at that time to give us a report as council members as to where we stood on that revolving loan. And in the history of that revolving loan fund, they had lost, the city had lost over $100,000 in bad debts. So, every time we loaned money, it was a risk factor. I personally, my company had borrowed money from there, and we actually still have a loan with the city. We write a check every month to pay off that loan. Ray, you've used that loan, and it's been successful for us. But the point is, every time that we take an action, there's a risk involved. And the city would have a risk involved with putting this open for public auction. But I think the benefits outweigh the risk. I think the idea that we get it back in the public's eye, that it's available for sale, and the two entities that had looked at it, hopefully they would be coming to that auction, as well as maybe any other entity that might want to improve that building. So, public auction gives us an opportunity to get this building back and possibly either on the tax rolls would make Geraldine happy, or it might be something like a public entity taking over. And it could be something totally different that didn't express interest the first time around.
Putting it up? Putting it up for auction, don't we give the right of way to approve it? Isn't it to the highest bidder?
You're again, I think that we'd want to keep it simple. I'm sorry to interrupt, John.
That's okay.
The goal is to keep it as simple as possible. So, ideally, I have seen auctions, though, where they sell something and they sell it on if. You don't know it for another day or two because they have to go back to the estate and make sure, because you've got people that live out of the area, before they decide if they're going to be able to take that bid. That's been common with farmland in some states where they just couldn't make a decision that day.
Well, here, we've got to build in reserve with the 80% requirement. A lot of times, that has to do with what reserve they put on, the amount they won't take less than. Here, we've got that built in. The question would be other conditions.
Yeah, you know, again, for that building where it's located on Main Street, I prefer myself. And again, I'm just one person, one voter, but I would prefer a commercial venture going there. You know, I would not be opposed to something like that if that's what we were going to limit of those that were bidding for it would be commercial ventures. I also would not be opposed to having another request for proposal without, not necessarily right away, but you know, maybe a month or two down the road. We did have interest from others. When we put out the last request for proposal, they just didn't submit a proposal. So, to Ray's point there, we could have more people submit a proposal than we did the last time that the two that also put in. So, you know, I just, economic development, I mean, that's everything we've been doing here in Princeton, Main Street, tourism, bringing people to town. It's all been geared, I think, towards bringing business, industry to town. We are with what we got going north of the interstate. And then we have this possible project here with Premier Products, jobs, property taxes, business growth, expansion in a state that does not see that, I think, is paramount to our moving forward as a community. Slow, but you know, consistent growth. That's my thoughts.
Mayor, if I could ask just one more thought here. So, if, I know we don't take any council action because it's on the agenda, but would there be a consensus that Rachel could inquire about if the two entities that had expressed interest with the request for proposal would be interested in attending an auction? Is that something she could get back to you on? To just do some research on that to see if those two entities are still out there?
Again, I don't have a problem with doing that. But again, I'm, again, I'm just, I think it needs to be limited to commercial ventures.
I can't support it. I would rather, I think we're a city council that we can make that decision on. We can decide who should be buying that. But I don't think we need an auctioneer to make a decision for us. And I wouldn't ever agree to getting back into the loan business. I don't think that's something the city should be doing. That's not a warning we're hearing. I know it worked for you guys, and that's great. But I would never, ever reenact that project.
But plus, we'd have to have the money to fund it. We don't have the money to fund it.
And Jerry, I respect that. But if we were to sell that property on contract, we would be in the loan business. Because when we had two proposals, one was cash, the other one was going to be over five years of 3% interest, we are in the loan business. We do that.
All right. I don't know. I'm not sure we ever agreed these other final documents as to how those were. But I'm just saying, you know, I don't think the low-interest loan game is something that a city wants to get involved in.
Well, for tonight's discussion, I'm just bringing up about the idea of an auction. Ray, do you have any comments on that auction?
I'd be fine if she at least looked at it as an option. But let them look into it and go from there. I don't know where Laura stands on it.
I would just like a legal to look into it, see if there's any, you know, anything that's going to give up the edge. But I wouldn't have any problem with that.
Are you good with that, Mayor? Does she do some research on that and get back to you?
Well, yeah, I don't, I mean, that's fine with the research. I mean, I don't have a problem with that. But again, I go back. If we put it up for auction, I would only want to put it up for auction if we're putting it up for auction for commercial businesses going into that building.
Are you saying, though, that you would allow the high school, if they wanted to use it for what they had asked originally, use it for what they do, to ask originally, or you, would you at least let them bid at an auction?
Well, again, that's not a commercial venture.
So, if that's not how you feel?
But we wanted, if you wanted to do the research to put it up for auction for commercial ventures, I mean, you know, if you want to look into the research of doing that, you know, I don't have a problem with, with that portion of it. But again, I would limit it to commercial ventures, and then once we get the information back, then we're going to have to address it as a council and make a final decision on whether or not we want to go that route. But again, this is just.
Sure. This is what, this is what the council means for, right? To have good dialogue. I would really encourage if we could figure out a way to convince the council that if we allowed, if high school's still interested now, maybe in Rachel's due diligence, maybe she'll find that high school's no longer interested in that property at that point, then it makes it pretty simple to put it up for auction. Thank you, Mayor, for letting us suggest the idea.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any other, we want to be in whole business. Any other whole business? Any new business? Before public comment, I just wanted to signal out Robin Swift. She's out here in the audience tonight. She just opened a new store on South Main Street called Songbird, and it's a gift shop. And if you get an opportunity, stop in, and it's a beautiful shop. So, stop in and take a look. Any public comments?
Actually, I did want to say something.
What's your name?
I'm Robin Swift, and, you know, after hearing both sides and things this past two weeks, you know, I, I try to feel like, I try to be somebody that looks at both sides, because every side has a relevant point. But I, I do want to get back to economic development on this subject, because I want you to, many of you weren't here, and I wasn't here until the 70s, but when you look back to when Harper Wyman came, LCN, you had J&amp;L Steel forming Johnson's. What, what branch dropped in our community was Birdhaven, everything, East of Homer. You had Greencroft. You had then higher area coming in the 70s, the country Oaks, Charnar Hill. So, when you look at economic development, and if that can provide 10 or 20 jobs for a male or female wage earner, I mean, this stimulates growth in our community on lots, lots for sitting empty. Ray, you've got 14 empty in your subdivision. You know, I'm trying to get Don Fife at Liberty Village to expand some of that senior living into residential living, so we can have our growth, you know, so we're not landlocked to a couple of little lots here and there. So, you know, I guess, you know, that's what I look at when I see these situations coming. And, you know, what can we do for the parent or breadwinner, breadwinner of a family in this community? And what can we provide somebody from traveling 20 or 30 miles on Route 80 to fill up their gas tank and stop at that wall or Hy-Vee, but then employing them in our town and filling up here, getting somebody here, not bringing, carry out from there, and that's what stimulates growth. That's just my thoughts on that. And I do, I do look at both sides, and I really do, because I, I do feel, you know, everybody's passionate, and I, I honestly, 50/50. But when I look at economic, you know, family, what it can do for Princeton, that's what I have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Any further public comments? Just one more comment for me. Just a reminder, this Friday is our first street concert of the year. Street concert begins at 5, well, vendors will be out at 5 o'clock. Music starts at 6. It's Suburban Cowboys, a country western band out of Chicago. Very good band. They got, they have a female fiddler that's really, really good, so hope to see everybody there. If I have anything else, I will entertain a German of this great meeting to reconvene at our next meeting.
I make a motion that we adjourn our regular meeting this evening and reconvene for the next council meeting on Monday, July 2nd, 2018, 7 o'clock here at City Hall.
Second.
Motion has been second. Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson, Mavry, Fabia, Newman, Mayor Querom.
Aye. This meeting's adjourned, and thank you all for coming.